Yeah.
And thank you for being so patient with us with our many questions.
That's what we do. So, right now, the power lines, as you can see, we've got a couple of poles through here that are still marked, and then a couple of poles that are over here. So, there is the potential for some of the relocation of some of the power poles. We haven't started any of that process. That's a ways down the road, but we'll avoid any relocation. We might have to shift a couple of internal driveways, but, you know, we'll deal with that when we get into full design as far as power poles and avoiding.
So, you're going to have to work out with Mel Wheeler, yeah?
Well, I'm in favor of the project. I'm in favor of what you're doing. I would move to approve the vaca- or the abandonment, I'm sorry, a partial abandonment of that road. Avenue E.
That's the recommendation.
Yes, the recommendation.
The recommendation of the ownership and licensing.
Based on that as well.
Uh, not the licensing, just single ownership.
Transfer of the single ownership, right.
So, we have a motion to approve on, approve this based upon a recommendation of ownership and licensing of the casino. Do I hear a second?
Not, not the licensing.
Not the licensing, the single.
Yeah, I missed, I missed it up.
Ownership?
Earlier.
Ownership, okay.
Do we have a second?
So, you need a second?
Yeah.
I'll second that. Okay.
So, all those in favor, under these conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
George abstains. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll go on to item G of the hearing. Consideration of the situation for the future management of road easement. Applicants represented by White Lion Holdings LLC are requesting an approximate two hundred eighty degrees, two hundred eighty foot length by twenty foot width, wide fifty six hundred square feet of the alleyway. Along twenty-nine between Avenue D and E be vacated, abandoned, or accommodate a future commercial development. Applicants and the property address and their general locations in Ely, Nevada are listed in tonight's Regional Planning Commission Agenda on page four in item under G under section one. Can you open this back up?
I believe Mr. Chachas is gonna just.
I want to reiterate my disclosure. I will not be voting on this issue.
Okay, you're abstaining on this too?
Abstain.
Okay.
So, a renewal of the disclosure and abstention as previously read on items E and F.
Okay, George abstains in pursuant to the disclosures he did on items E and F. Okay, opening up to public, public hearing.
San Marino again. This should be pretty easy because when we moved there, the alley wasn't even accessible. I spent three days cleaning up the trash that had been dumped by one of the neighbors in there. And as soon as I finished, he had a party and threw more trash up there. So, if you cut this alley off, people will be accessing it basically through our property because the power poles are in the middle of the alley. So, anytime someone has to go in and out there, they have to weave through our property to get in the alley. And there's only going to be ourselves and two homes left there. So, if anyone needs to work in their backyard, their fence, the power company, you know, we watch for them. They've recently done work there the last year or so and kind of updated all the fuses and lines there. So, it should be pretty good, but if they were pretty flexible with them and they're, they're good. If they, they need to get in and we're not there, they call us or they wake us up or whatever. So, that would be the only thing. I think the only person that would need to be in there might be the power company or the fire department. And so, they can go through our yard to get to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I failed to mention, I think Mr. Dietrich's letter also is to be submitted for item G. Is that correct? Did he refer to that?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it's all under the same gray line.
So, it'll be admitted into the amendments as well?
Yeah. Okay, for item G, we also submit the item from L. Edwards Dietrich that was read into the record earlier on items E and F. Okay. Go on to that. Any other public input? Okay, close for public input, and then we'll go on to item G two, discussion of possible action. Requesting approval of the Ely, Ely City Council petition for vacation or abandonment of road easement. Applicants represented by Pine West Holdings LLC are required that an approximate two hundred eighty feet long by twenty foot wide, fifty six hundred square feet of the alleyway on block twenty-nine between Avenue D and E be vacated, abandoned, and accommodate a future commercial development. The applicants and property addresses and/or general locations in Ely, Nevada are listed in tonight's Regional Planning Commission Agenda on page four. Item letter G under section two.
Mr. Chair, I believe you used the word required. It's requesting, they're requesting that, not that that's required. So, just simply state that the word requesting is required.
Okay. Well, back to Pine West Holdings LLC are requesting an approximate two hundred eighty foot length by twenty foot wide square feet of the alleyway, block twenty-nine, Avenue D be vacated, so.
So, we're voting on G two?
Yes.
Just so we're looking at the right thing, that, that would be the.
That'd be this, this alleyway through there.
Oh, okay.
That's where that parking lot would be.
Well, this is just a piece of the whole, although that we approved.
Oh, right, we'd have to vacate this part.
Okay, uh, prior to moves that we approve, this, under the same guidelines.
Um, and I'll go ahead and second that, and course contingent on the sale, transfer of ownership for those closed lots there.
Okay.
To a single owner.
To a single owner.
Okay. So, therefore, let's open up for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? George abstains.
Abstain.
Okay. Okay. Public hearing. For the consideration of an application for reclassification of zoning of property. Applicant Linda Montgomery requesting the property be changed from zero five open range minimum of five acres to RE forty-three residential district minimum of one acre. Property address and her general location is five eleven north highway three eighteen, Lund, Nevada. APN zero one three, one one two dash eleven, and APN zero one three dash one two dash twelve. Section twenty-eight township twelve north, range sixty-two east, being a portion of block two, block twenty-two, of Lund and an acre flat on the west side of highway three eighteen. You want the public hearing? Okay. This is to be read in, addressed to the City of Ely, Building and Planning Department. This is in response to the letter received from your office regarding rezoning of Parson Avenue one in Nevada. The question, applicant Montgomery, we support your decision to rezone at this area. Signed, Donald F. Blatty. Okay, public input? Okay. We'll close for public hearing on that, and then we'll go to item H two. Discussion for possible action, approval of an application for a reclassification of zoning of property. Applicant Linda Montgomery requesting the property be changed from zero five open range minimum of five acres to RE forty-three residential district minimum of one acre. Property address and her general location is five eleven north highway three eighteen, Lund, Nevada. APN zero one three dash one one two dash eleven, and APN zero one three dash one one two dash twelve. North by the southeast of section twenty-eight township twelve north, range sixty-two east, being a portion of block two, block twenty-two of the Lund ten acre flat on the west side of highway three eighteen. Okay.
Good to you, Ross. Rose Fair survey record for Linda Montgomery. She take a look at the parcel map here, which will be on the next agenda item. This is O five currently, RE forty-three to the north, and the south, O five on the other side to the west. Currently, there's one parcel that's nonconforming for the O five zoning. But we're asking for everything with RE forty-three. Which is in line with properties to the south, north, and east.
I didn't realize she owned all of that property, but I think what she's doing is the right thing to do.
Well, she currently has a land use code of two single family units on that anyways, which would kind of clean that up a little bit. But you're correct, I mean, it's surrounded by smaller parcels, others, five acres.
Yes, the next agenda item being the parcel map, if that is approved, that does clean up the two residents on the one lot. Gets that in two conformity also.
Based on the map, if you look on the, what would be the east side of the road?
Of the highway?
Yeah, the side of the highway. Is it gonna allow a home to go into that?
This would be two point two three acres, so, yes.
So, there could be a house there?
Yes.
Okay.
That side's currently a four acre piece, correct? When I looked it up today.
Two point two three. I'm not sure what the assessor has, but that's what the survey.
Because it was four acres on that side, and then five point seven on, on the bigger side.
Two point two three on one side.
That, that map don't show where her residence is, but.
Yes, it does. Her, her residence is here.
Right there.
And that's the other trailer in the corner there.
You got better ideas than I do.
I mean, I truly don't see a problem with this, but the other advantages in the future, if they want to resell that, it would be a problem with two houses on one lot. You know, when Mr. Montgomery passed away, he was interested in trying to sell the trailer. It's hard, you can't get financing on anything else from a lender standpoint with it the way it is currently.
It's easier if it's broken down.
Absolutely.
When they initially came to me, I wasn't even aware that that wasn't RE forty-three without zooming in tight on the map. I thought it was RE forty-three, everything else around it was, otherwise I wouldn't be in here with both the items on the agenda at the same time.
We see that a lot around here, don't we?
Yeah, I recommend approval.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, and approval for George's cousin. About George?
I have a concern. It's my understanding the city, I mean, county code says two and a half minimum acres. I also have a concern on whether that property butts water and sewer. If it doesn't, then I would not really support this. I've been to a lot of meetings over the years, and people have had a little less than two acres were turned down. And yet, now we're looking at one acre parcels. That's not within the allowance of what's on the books per county code.
Which code are you referring to, George?
Two and a half, minimum acres.
Minimum acreage?
Yes.
I'm not aware of that code.
Take your time and look.
All the surrounding properties are RE forty-three, which is one acre. One acre for well and septic is fine.
Well, for years, I'm gonna tell you, in attending the different meetings, Carol McKenzie stopped others because they didn't meet that two and a half minimum acreage. And I'm kind of surprised that we're cutting it down to one acre parcels in that area. I just want to be in compliance with county code, because I've seen others turned down in the past, and I don't like that.
No, I understand being in compliance with county code, but we would be in line with the surrounding properties at RE forty-three. Once again, I'm not familiar with the code that you're referring to.
Okay, and if there was water sewer available for hookup, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But because it isn't, I think the fact that you have that close of, I'm gonna call it congestion for lack of a better word, that you could have possible cross contamination between septic systems and people's wells.
Septic system and the wells, a hundred, a hundred and fifty foot radius between your well and your septic.
The concern is still there because that's what I've heard in the past. And again, I want to be consistent.
No, I agree.
Thank you.
Well, I think about, speaking of consistency, you know, what we're trying to do or achieve anyway is to be.
Speak up, ma'am.
Is to be consistent with the surrounding area, and that's why I would be in favor of it. So.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded already?
All seconded. Is that what you asked for, is a second?
What's on item H though, correct?
H two, are you going to abstain from voting?
I have to renew my abstention.
Okay, yeah.
For some reasons before.
Okay, so the, the same disclosure and abstention then?
That I have on item B.
Okay, and you withdraw any comments that you, that you may have made?
Yes.
Or questions that you may have made?
So, I, I can't even discuss, part of the discussion either, correct?
Correct, if, if you do. I, I was not aware of that. I just thought it was aye.
I don't think there's.
You can ask questions, but you just can't try to sway the, the board one way or the other.
Gotcha.
Well, it's cleaner if you don't participate at all, though.
Okay.
And that's what I advise, Mr. Chachas.
Yeah, but George is different.
No, no. I'm, I'm advising Ms. Alberg the same as I advise you.
I agree.
Yeah, a little too little, a little too late. For the record.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I guess I jumped the gun a bit here. Was that just a discussion or moving on here to the?
The action portion of it? Yeah, you can make a motion.
Question.
I saw the same thing. I, I see we don't do spot zoning or anything, so this actually just conforming to what we believe is.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Breaking down to all the surroundings, so.
Got it. You have something, George?
Yes, I want to know if the Lund Town Council had any input on this issue.
Not, not that I know of, George.
Were they contacted?
Not that I know of.
We should do a better job of contacting the community leaders when the zone change takes place.
Is there a boundary for the Lund Town Council?
Uh, you tell me.
And know I'm asking.
I'm assuming it's within the community of Lund.
We are a board that represents the region, so.
Pardon me?
We are a board that represents the region, so I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, if the parcel is within the Lund community boundaries, then the Lund Town Council should have some say in what may affect the zoning in their home district. That's all.
Okay, and they are a part of the region, so I'll go ahead and move to approve the parceling here, so it conforms to the surrounding area and in favor of it. Do we have a second?
Then I'll second that.
Okay, if you have a second. Okay, vote for a vote. All those in favor of passing this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye, I oppose.
Okay, George opposes?
Then one abstention.
And one abstained. Okay, that's three, one abstention and one abst- okay. And one, one vote.
So, that doesn't pass.
Okay.
There is an abstention, an opposition, and a.
Yeah, one, one abstained, one opposes.
Yeah, so you.
Five, three, and then three, three ayes.
So, we barely pass with the quorum, okay?
Yes.
Okay, we're good? Okay. Okay, we move on to item I. Approval of parcel map, applicant Linda Montgomery wishes to divide parcels APN zero one three dash one one two dash twelve. Or is that, that's. Seven one to seven eleven. I think that's seven eleven. Uh, public hearing again, uh, zero one three, one one two, dash eleven, that's the one we talked about the other day. Create parcels for the existing.
You mean it should, it should be eleven instead of twelve, is that right?
Yeah, I think it was, I think it should be eleven instead of twelve.
So, it's the applicant now?
No, not on that.
I think it would have been the parcel, I thought.
So, the one on the right side of the highway means.
Twelve, eleven on this side.
So, you're, you're requesting to divide the one ending in eleven, the one on the left side?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Okay, so it's right.
This is not a parcel. All I did is monumented the boundaries.
Okay. So, twelve is the correct number then?
So, we are talking about twelve.
I want to make sure he's.
Do you want to reread it?
I had a call from the assessor's office stating that they thought you had the incorrect parcel number on that, that it should have been eleven and not twelve.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
So, what am I announcing here, eleven or twelve?
You're gonna have to re- submit this.
Yeah, the agenda item is twelve.
Okay.
Does say eleven and twelve's on the other side.
Oh, it sure does.
Okay, I'll. I'll reread this.
Well, it seems like there's a discrepancy. The assessor says it's eleven, but the other item says twelve.
Yeah, and Buzz is saying he, he wants twelve.
But here's.
I want this side.
Yeah, it's eleven as far as the assessor.
Okay, look at the assessor's map here. Here's perhaps Ben's, maybe the type goes on your end.
It just says parcel three. The typo is on my end.
Okay.
So, you're gonna amend it to read parcel ending in, APN number ending in eleven?
If I can amend that, yes. That I'd like to do.
Request amendment, yes.
I'd like to request amendment, let you read for item I, there will be APN zero one three dash one one two dash one one.
Okay, so noted.
And then you'll have to reread it.
Yeah, and back to the top. Approval of parcel map, applicant Linda Montgomery wishes to divide parcels APN zero one three dash one one two dash one one to create parcels for the existing homes and one parcel for estate planning. The address and or general location of the property is five eleven north highway three eighteen, Lund, Nevada. One quarter section southeast, section twenty-eight township twelve north, range sixty-two E.
And I believe Ms. Alberg is renewing her disclosure and abstention.
Yes, I am.
As, as previously read on item H.
Yes.
So, she's lifting her abstention on that?
No, she's, she's renewing it without rereading the exact, the exact same reasons, correct, Ms. Alberg?
Correct.
Yes, Mr. Chachas.
Yes, sir. The open meeting law says you must be specific. When you mean eleven, it has to show eleven. That's the notice, that's not the notice you gave out to the public. You need to reagenda this item. It's improper.
Duly noted. They can take that into consideration that it wasn't clear and complete notification.
And the only notices that were, were the agendas that were published. There are no public, public hearing notices.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
So, there are no public hearing notices on the parcel map. It is on the agendas.
That's fine. The agenda has to be specific per the open meeting law, and it is not. It's being changed. We're talking about two different parcels.
Yeah, I think if it were a typographical error on something not as substantive, then it probably would have been okay. But it might be the best to, to potentially table this and move it to the next item due to that error or the next meeting.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to table it until we change the description?
So moved.
Okay, Jesse moves?
I didn't hear your.
Okay.
You got a motion?
That's correct.
Motion is second to table this until we correct the, the address of the, of the property to the proper numbering.
Sorry, Ben.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling this, say. Yeah, we had a second from, from George.
My fault.
Uh, George.
Made the motion. The other George made the second.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All those in favor.
Could you clarify that? George Chachas made the first motion?
Yeah, George, George has made, made the first motion to, to table this.
And that motion was seconded by?
Jesse.
Jesse.
Okay. Thoughts, right? Okay. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it is tabled.
Abstain.
An abstention.
Okay. Discussion for possible action, frugal minutes from Regions Landing Commission meeting held on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Like, no paragraph, isn't it? Shortest meeting on record.
Yes. We just had a minute to make up for it today, right?
Right.
Okay.
I'll second it, looks great.
Got a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of approving, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, I wasn't there.
You missed a great meeting, great as it was. Okay, move on to public comment. And now we'll open up to public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't make the last meeting because I got my notice on the eighteenth, eight o'clock when I went home. We need to mail out the agendas in a proper fashion in these three days prior. At least I could have gotten a courtesy call as others have done in the past. That's water under the bridge, but I want the same consideration. Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's a snow sleigh hill just behind us here crossing the seniors. There is no safety barrier. Those kids come down that hill, they're gonna drop approximately five feet on the concrete or into the street. In the past, you had an injury of a young lady hit the construction degree that cost thousands in medical bills. I brought this up two different times now before the commission. Again, we have rules and regulations, we have safety people. Someone's ignoring and dropping the ball and needs to be addressed. I don't want to bring it up again. Mr. Chairman, I want to bring up again, ten thirty-three Bell Avenue. City clerk is encroaching on the sidewalk area and that fence, railing fence needs to be.
City clerk is encroaching on the sidewalk area and that fence, railing fence needs to be moved back. Again, we have rules and regulations for everybody, just not a select few. Mr. Chairman, nothing's been done to date in regards to the new end dot, um, project, uh, on Avenue D between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street. No ADA compliance, again, federal law. We're not addressing that, and it needs to be addressed.